It's not something you have to do. And so it's really, it's really incredible. And I think he's created a path, not only for Schenectady, but for others, honestly, across the country. Because the study that we're going to talk about today and the program we've, we've put forward is really revolutionary, honestly. So he wanted me to take this picture out, but I said no. So it's because of his proactive vision. He sort of mentioned it to you, but his vision was that basically there are way too many hospitalizations and they're, they're avoidable. And how often do you see these patients who are coming to the hospital with issues that have spiraled? And if you could only have identified them earlier, you could have saved them a week in the hospital, two weeks in the ICU, may have been able to extend their life. And that's what has the mayor really upset. Not only the costs to the city, but the cost to patients in terms of their life, their quality of life. And his vision was really, let's try to spot these complications early. Let's leverage the resources of the city to save lives and improve the, the city of Schenectady. And let's start with Ellis, which is the heart and soul of Schenectady. And let's see if we can move things forward at Ellis. So why we started with oncology? Well, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Mahmood, who's going to tell you a little bit about why oncology is such a ripe area to start with.
So when I was first told about this device, and I was asked, hey, do you want to do anything with this? It's like, wow, this would be great. The reason being that nearly 60% of cancer patients die from infections. A third of our patients are admitted and readmitted because of infections. And 40% of our patients experience unplanned hospitalizations. Those, you may or may not know, but infections are critical in cancer patients because their immune systems are very compromised. And currently, the standard is that we tell our patients to take their temperature at least once a day, especially during the critical time in their chemotherapy cycle. But a lot of patients don't have functioning thermometers. They can't find, find it. They don't, they forget. They'll only check it once a day. And fevers tend to be cyclical. And so they might miss the time at which the temperature occurred. And so this device, it could be, you know, placed on the chest and then the temperature could be detected 24/7. So every hour that we delay and start of antibiotics increases the risk of death by 8%. So here you can see, so the critical is 38.3, a temperature of 38.3. And temperature goes up and down. And it's not a steady increase, that green line. It's not, that's not what the pattern it follows. Temperature tends to follow the purple line, where it might spike and then it goes down and then it'll spike, and then it'll go down. So by detecting infection before it becomes life threatening, this is really changing the paradigm of how we treat, particularly in cancer patients, how we, how we treat them and how we look after them. So this is the Staywell program, the TempShield, made by Aion. So this has become, so since we started this program, we put it on all patients before they start chemotherapy. It gives off an alert. And when it alerts that they're running a temperature that's high, that's when we can call them and say, hey, you have a temperature. And they're like, oh, okay. So then we can tell them either come into the office and get them checked out. So we can save them time from going to the emergency room. They can come into the office rather than, you know, going to the emergency room, getting admitted to the hospital. And so Sam will talk about this, that it, we have shown that it really helps reduce the deaths, risk of infection, picking it up early, treating it as an outpatient. So ends up saving time and money.
So what I think was so interesting and compelling about this program that was undertaken at Ellis, that the city of Schenectady, through the mayor's leadership, pushed for, was that this was the first time ever cancer patients had been monitored through their entire course of treatment. So we, we changed the standard of care for the detection of infection with cancer patients. And, you know, I have to give Dr. Mahmood credit because we, we talked to a number of folks about working with us and she was the first. And she was the first doctor at Ellis and she was the first person who stepped up and said, I want to do this. And I'll talk a little bit more about it in a second, but it's just a testament to the, the push for innovation at, at Ellis's cancer center. So what we found out notably is, and this was a real concern, is the out-of-pocket cost, potential out-of-pocket cost for the patients. And this was very compelling that we showed that 99% of the patients were covered by insurance and 60% had no out-of-pocket costs. So this really means that this is something that can be given to the vast majority of patients. Everybody who's undergoing chemotherapy could get this device for the course of their treatment and it would not be a financial burden on them. And so we had some really pretty groundbreaking outcomes. We can't share the exact statistics right now because we are moving into publication and we're sort of prohibited until it's, it's released. But in a couple of months, you're going to hear about the, the statistics and they are groundbreaking, transformative. We have significantly fewer impatient days. We have a major, major drop in a 60-day mortality of patients. So we're keeping patients alive longer. We're keeping them on their treatment longer by identifying infection. We're stopping the cycle of chemo-infection cycle that often takes patients out, that demoralizes them, that ends their treatment. Majority of the patients recommend the TempShield, gives them peace of mind. So what it's next in terms of the Staywell program? Our hope is that with this compelling data and with the outcomes we've generated, that we can form partnerships with MVP, with CDPHP, with Albany Med, St. Peters, help broaden this to the broader community within Schenectady. So this is available in a much broader area and potentially look at more areas outside of oncology, support dialysis patients, patients in long-term care facilities and so forth. Anyone who is immune compromised, it's at risk of infection. Because what we showed is that temperature, continuous temperature tracking doesn't just identify infection. It can identify all kinds of complications very early and anywhere from two to three days before patients have any, any symptoms. But what's really interesting that I want to make sure the city council understands today is that I think what we uncovered is that Ellis has, and what you have in the city of Schenectady is a real jewel with the cancer center at Roswell Park. And the more that the city of Schenectady can leverage this cancer center and prop up an innovator like Dr. Mahmood, I think the more you can pave the way. City of Schenectady has an opportunity to be the leader in cancer care in the whole capital region. Because with the ability to do remote patient monitoring like this, no one else has done this in the capital region, you can do advanced treatments here. You could do outpatient bone marrow treatments. You can do CAR-T treatments. You can do bispecific treatments, the most groundbreaking treatments that require continuous temperature monitoring. Patients are having to stay in hospitals for two weeks to get these treatments. But because Schenectady has done this, Ellis Hospital has done this, it, it can be a leader. And I think what's so important, and I'm saying this because I care so passionately about it and it's been so incredible to partner with Dr. Mahmood, is that if the city council and the mayor could continue to support Ellis, I think through your leadership, through the cancer center, really has the opportunity to support the hospital, to be an engine for propping up the hospital, to be an engine for more revenue for the hospital. And so I'll move off my soapbox, but I really think it's really an opportunity, an additional patient population that could be addressed with the device that we're looking at in terms of broadening it, our dialysis patients, those high-risk of chronic conditions, immunosuppressive patients and so forth. And I'll just end with a brief video for you that gives you a sense of the impact that has been made at, at Ellis Hospital.
My name is Talat Mahmood. I'm a therapist, yes, I think this is a game changer. Take this on. And here, with this tape.
My signal was spikes. I get a order on my phone and then I should be called from Tempsure. I think the Tempsure is an excellent way to signalize because time, time is of the essence to get there to the hospital.
We have seen that the TempShield is the difference between an antibiotic and a hospitalization. It has automated checking temperature for cancer patients. So this is one thing we can take off their plate.
My name is Linda Farkas. My son John wears the TempShield device. He's got adrenal cortical cancer. It was pretty imperative that we have an idea of what his temperature is, pretty much 20%. So he's been wearing that device now for several months and has found it extremely helpful.
My name is Amy Rabbit. I have stage IV metastatic breast cancer. I've been going through that for almost four years now. I absolutely would recommend the Aion TempShield to cancer patients. I know it saved my life. My temperature ended up at 104 by the time I got to the ER. So if it wasn't for being contacted by the Aion representative to tell me my temperature was so high, I probably would have got off. It's been very comforting having this device on me so that I don't have to stick to the thermometer and not the thermometer. But just to know that if something happens, that somebody's got our back.
I just really feel that the TempShield device is one of the most practical inventions that I could imagine for a cancer patient. It's simple, it's easy to buy off, it connects directly to your phone. It's just a very easy piece of equipment. And it's, you know, basically there to help, help you go through your treatments. And like I said, it can help you save your life.
Thank you, Madam President. Council, have any questions? We have 48 seconds.
Just about.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Mahmood. Thank you. This was something that you rolled out last year. You had a press conference outside the ER. Yes, wonderful.
Fire department.
Right, all right.
Chief Burns and Assistant Chief, Mayor. Zero is here tonight.
Yes, I saw him. Thank you. I thought so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Mahmood. Thank you, Sam.
So I think that that was a very good presentation thank you for bringing to us. And I know that all of you were glad to be here to, to hear it. I'd like to call to order the city council caucus meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2025. We have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk could please read.
Public hearing. Public hearing amending the city of Schenectady zoning map to rezone the properties that make up the former St. Clair's Hospital from an institutional district to an R3 multiple-family residential district.
Thank you. We have eight items for original consideration. If the clerk would please read. Item number one.
Item number one for original consideration, a resolution calling for a public hearing to amend certain sections of Chapter 28 of the Schenectady City Code for language updates for city council procedures.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 818 Albany Street for $115,000.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 824 Broadway for $95,000.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 209 Elmer Avenue for $135,000.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 1134 Albany Street for $5,000.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number six.
Item number six under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the withdrawal of 20 Hawk Street from foreclosure.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration, a resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month 2025.
Item number seven will be taken out of order and presented by Councilmember Patrick. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration, a resolution welcoming the New York Phoenix basketball team to Schenectady.
Item number eight will be taken out of order and presented by Councilmember Williams. If there's nothing more to come before the city council caucus, I ask for motion to adjourn. Move by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Mutavirin. All in favor? Aye. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order for Monday, February 24th, 2025. And I'd like to call on Andrew McGough from the Christ Family Fellowship Church for prayer invocation.
Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Lord, as we gather here, I pray that you bless our time here together and every decision that has been and will be made here, Lord, it will propel this, 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 the city of Schenectady into a beacon of light. Father, I pray for your protection upon the mayor and every council member in the name of Jesus. Bless our time together here in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I'd like to call on Josh, a member of the New York Phoenix, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I've asked the clerk to please complete the roll call.
Mr. Toro. Mr. Farley.
Here.
Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. Mutavirin.
President.
Ms. Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
President.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here. I'd like to call, we have one, our first out-of-order, out-of-order resolution, number seven, a resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month 2025. And I'd like to call on Councilmember Patrick to present this resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. May I have the floor?
You have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to call Ms. Bernice Rivera, who's our president of our Schenectady City School District, to join me here. Thanks for being here. So March has been celebrated for many years now as Women's History Month. And I'm just very excited that Bernice is here to join us this month. And I think as you listen to the resolution, also remember our presenters from our first part of our meeting as well, two women, obviously, in healthcare, leading the way to just really important, important discoveries for us. So a resolution recognizing March as Women's History Month 2025. Whereas in 1980, President Jimmy Carter designated the first week of March as National Women's History Week, noting that the achievements, leadership, courage, strength, and love of the women who built America were as vital as that of the men whose names we know so well. And whereas since 1987, Women's History Month has been officially recognized by the United States Congress and celebrated throughout March. Whereas Women's History Month is dedicated to honoring the accomplishments and contributions of women of every race, class, and ethnic background throughout United States history, many of whom have been overlooked. And whereas the National Women's History Alliance's theme for 2025, Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations, recognizing, recognizes how throughout history, from classrooms to boardrooms and from grassroots movements to global initiatives, women educators and leaders have played a pivotal role in nurturing minds and inspiring transformative action. And whereas this year's theme celebrates the contributions women have made to the American educational system, the free marketplace of ideas and the very fabric of our democracy. And whereas the collective strength, equality, and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership serve as an inspiration for all generations, past and present, leaving a lasting impact and fostering future leaders and change makers. And whereas recognizing the achievements of women in all facets of life, education, science, community, government, literature, arts, sports, medicine, and law, has a profound impact on the development of self-respect and new opportunities for girls and young women, inspiring them to pursue leadership roles. Now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize and celebrate Women's History Month in March 2025 and to acknowledge and salute the critical role that women have played in the development, success, and achievements of the city of Schenectady and the United States.
May I make, may I move that forward? Yes, I'll need a second, please. Second, second by Mr. Farley. All those in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
I'd like to ask Ms. Rivera to say a few words. And I also should point out that she also works for the New York State United Teachers Association and is also, I think, a former teacher. So we're just really lucky to have you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Carmel Patrick, council members, council president. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here. This is such an honor. Women, I can go in on us now. So, but women have done so much in education, so much throughout our history here in the United States. We are, every single person in this room, we are who we are because of women. Whether they were teachers, whether they were your mothers, whether you were your aunts, your grandmothers, your cousin, you are who you are because of a woman. So I am so grateful to be here, to be the vessel to talk about, very briefly, about the impact that women have had in history. And thank you so much for us being here. And I do want to continue. And I know the district wants to continue working in partnership to continue doing well by our kids as women and as members of the community in general. I do want to leave with this. This is all rich, right? Well-behaved women do not change history. So let's not be well-behaved. All right? So thank you. Thank you so much. Our next out-of-order resolution is item number eight, a resolution welcoming the New York Phoenix basketball team to Schenectady. And I would like to call on Councilmember Williams to please present this resolution.
Thank you. May I have the floor?
You have the floor.
At this moment, I'd like to invite the New York Phoenix family on this side of the aisle. And it's at this moment that I'm realizing that all of my basketball dreams were just dreams.
Keep going. All right, are we all in?
So this is a resolution welcoming the New York Phoenix basketball team to Schenectady. Whereas on November 18th, 2024, the Schenectady-based professional basketball team, the New York Phoenix, was announced as a member of the Basketball League, also known as TBL. And team owners Rebecca Clifford, Sam Clifford, and I only, I only know one way. Polly Wall, Polly Wall selected Coach Travis as the head coach and general manager for the inaugural, for the inaugural season to bring a championship DNA to Schenectady. And whereas the Schenectady Phoenix symbolizes rebirth, renewal, and immortality, the mythological bird consumed by fire only to rise again from its own ashes boldly captures Schenectady's resurgence, overcoming adversity and emerging stronger than ever before. And whereas the New York Phoenix will play its home games at Armory Studios New York, which under the vision of the Cousins Ray and Jeff Legere, was repurposed in 2012 as a multipurpose event center with a shared mission of revitalizing the Mill Artisan District and attracting attention to Schenectady County. And whereas the New York Phoenix's opening weekend, February 28th, 2025, against the Connecticut Crusaders, and March 1st, 2025, against the Halifax Hoopers, will restore the city of Schenectady's prominence as a basketball city. We must also pay tribute to the NBA players such as Barry Kramer, Pat Riley, and James D. Thompson Jr., and professional player Rashawn Freeman and past semi-professional teams, the Schenectady Legends and the Schenectady Brewers. And whereas basketball's intrinsic values of teamwork, respect, discipline, and commitment are well documented throughout, throughout history, James Namath, the inventor of basketball, is often quoted as saying, "The invention of basketball was not an accident. It was developed to meet a need." And whereas TBL President Dave Magley stated that the impact of having a professional basketball team playing in downtown Schenectady extends far beyond family fun and affordable entertainment. We're going to do something that you are proud to have. For us to succeed, we have to be visible. For us to be visible, we have to use our platform to impact lives. And whereas Discover Schenectady, Metroplex, city and county leaders worked collectively to bring this new sports team to our community. And whereas team owners, the head coach, state, local, and league officials eagerly accept the challenge of building a winning team and culture, our true success will be measured by our collective ability to dominate our crosstown rival, the Albany Petroons. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Schenectady, excuse me, now therefore be it resolved that the Schenectady City Council and Mayor Gary R. McCarthy do hereby pause in their deliberations to proudly welcome the New York Phoenix, the city of Schenectady. As the team elevates sports and creates its own identity as Schenectady's new professional franchise, we celebrate their commitment and sportsmanship and look forward to their positive impact on the youth of the capital region, both on and off the court. Like to move the resolution?
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by everyone. All, all those in favor? Aye. Congratulations. Motion, Patrick.
So good evening and thank you, everybody, for this special evening. On the heels of National History Month of Women, Rebecca Clifford is the only female sports owner in the capital region. So all can attest, as she said before, we would be nowhere without a female. So. There are three things that I would love to leave with everyone in this building this evening. Number one, thank you of the bottom of our hearts. This is absolutely such a special moment. This is our third season running a team, and we're extremely proud to bring the expansion franchise into Schenectady. However, this would have never happened if it weren't for some key individuals in this room. Ray Gillan with the Metroplex, Ray Legere, Armory Studios, Mayor McCarthy. The team that is in this city is incredibly, incredibly the wind in our sails. So we cannot thank you enough. We've done an amazing amount of job, work in only three months, okay? Point number two, I want to introduce the New York Phoenix basketball team. These are some of the best basketball players in the country. Our head coach, Trev Whitech. Our head coach Trev Whitech has assembled an incredible crew. But not only are they professional basketball players, they are a community asset. They are going to be in the schools and in the youth, and they are going to encourage and drive vision and change and hope. So they are going to be in schools, and they are going to help our youth succeed as well. Item number three, I want to reiterate why we called it the Phoenix. Phoenix is the rebirth of pro basketball in the city of Schenectady. I know that this city has a tremendous heritage of basketball, and we're very proud to just have this, that the symbol of the rebirth of pro basketball, because not only are we going to bring an entertaining element to the city, I believe, as a very zealous owner, that we're going to bring a national championship here as well.
Hi, Paulie Walnuts, as he said. I want to reiterate everything Sam said. Thank you so much, Ray. And the city of Schenectady, the county of Schenectady, there's lots of rays, there's lots of mics involved. But, but yeah, Rebecca is our rudder and takes us where we need to go and yells at us when we're doing things wrong. But, but without them, without Sam, Rebecca, myself, and without the team, and Armory Studios New York, and Trev, all the hard work that you put in. The Armory Studios was empty three months ago. And now there's an NBA court, and there's NBA baskets, and there's lights, and there's, there's seats. Heat. There's, there's air, we have air conditioning and parking. But I expect to see all of you at a, at a Phoenix game. And you will see me, I am on the court, even though I am an owner, I am the guy with the microphone, running around like a lunatic and bringing kids on the floor and getting kids out there. So I, I'd like to see you all there. Please come say hello, we'll be happy to see you. And I guarantee, I can guarantee, I can guarantee a championship, that's his job. But I can guarantee you that these guys will be very, very competitive, and you will, this is not rec league basketball, this is pro ball. So come on, let's go Phoenix.
So if you guys don't mind grabbing a picture?
Just Carl, just Carl, just Carl. You want everybody? Want the entire council?
All right, picture three, two, one. Give them a mark, three, two, one.
We are now? We are now?
Thank you, everyone. We have one public hearing, one public hearing this evening. Reminder, we have extended the public hearing comment to four minutes. And I also respectfully ask that each person coming to speak only speak, comment on the subject relevant to the public hearing itself. Thank you. Public hearing number one is amending the city's Schenectady zoning map to rezone the properties that are make, that make up the former St. Clair's Hospital from institutional district to a R3 multiple-family residential district. I have six people signed up to speak. The first person is Mara Ed, oh, Mark Egan.
Madam President, I was the council, Mark Egan, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. First of all, go Phoenix. And second of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak on the item for consideration for the council. You know, we heard it in the earlier presentation, the important role that Ellis plays in our community. And we know that, you know, that there's really no longer a medical use for the St. Clair's site. And this is, we have a perfect opportunity to really put it to productive use. You know, we could have had that site just sit there for a long time. And we don't want that become, we have, you know, we have the Alco site that's set vacant for a generation, and we experienced a rebirth. We have an opportunity not to have this site sit, but really to transform it to a new use. And really create a new neighborhood within an existing neighborhood, and also connect to strong assets like, like Central Park. An opportunity to take a site that kind of was put to productive use, but was never on the city's tax rolls, and have this to serve on the, the city's tax rolls. You know, oftentimes you seek a win-win situation, but this is like a win, a win, a win, a win. We won, we know that healthcare is a tough business. So we know that that campus has been a financial strain for Ellis. I already spoke about some of the other wins. It's a win to bring more residential opportunities in the city, an opportunity to not have blight within a neighborhood, and an opportunity to expand our tax base. So for all those reasons, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's someone else that signed up right under him, and the name is. Oh, Ray Gillan.
My handwriting isn't very good, sorry. Ray Gillan, Chairman of Metroplex, proud city resident, go Phoenix. I'm also the Commissioner of Planning and Economic Development in Schenectady County. My mother was one of those people, if she got sick in front of Ellis, she'd say, "Take me to St. Clair's, put me in an Emmy on segment at St. Clair's." Our family goes way back with St. Clair's. As Mark said, we just can't have a big, empty hospital in the middle of our city and not call our city a Phoenix and a resurgent city. I was here a few months ago, and you were kind enough to give me unanimous approval to submit a Restored New York grant to the state for some renovation funding for this project. We're very hopeful of getting that grant. We submitted a great application with your help. I want to thank the council for their support. And tonight, we encourage you to give us that same unanimous support when this rezoning comes before you. We can't have a big, empty hospital. This is going to provide residences, it's going to provide a connection to the park, it's going to provide a connection to Price Chopper. It's a great adaptive reuse of the building. The campus really, really won't change that much. There's three medical arts buildings that'll stay. The Ellis School of Nursing will stay. The exterior of the building will stay because the developer is using historic tax credits to redevelop the property, so it'll look very similar to what it does now. Instead of patients, you'll have residents, apartments. There's plenty of parking. It's a great, positive development for the neighborhood versus just having an empty building. And Mark didn't want to say it because he's too polite, I'll say it. This building, if we let it stand empty, it'll become another central warehouse. It'll become another Alco, just empty, and building's going downhill very, very quickly if they're vacant and they're not heated and they're not taken care of. Final point is, this is a bonus for Ellis. You heard about Ellis tonight, biggest employer in the city. One of the biggest employers in the city, certainly this helps Ellis as well. So as Mark said, it's a win-win-win, puts the building on the tax rolls. We have a proven development team you'll hear from next, and we really encourage you to give this unanimous support. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Buehl.
Good evening, everyone. I felt short in a room for the first time since I was in fifth grade. I'm representing my partner, Chris Berrigan, as well, from Schenectady Hardware Electric. We are very excited to tackle this project. It is a bear, but an exciting one. We are currently targeting about 240 apartments in the building. And we also have a LOI signed with a local daycare operator that would open up a 20,000-square-foot daycare in the building. More options on that front are always needed. We have a meeting set up with the Upper Union Neighborhood Association at the end of March to make sure we're meeting with neighbors, make sure we're hearing any potential concerns. From a traffic perspective, really excited, it's going to be a lot less than what it was as a hospital, obviously. And yeah, the building is absolutely terrifying. So if anyone wants to go into it, Chris is better than I am at not getting lost. But we are very, very excited and genuinely enthusiastic about tackling this project. Chris's mom worked there as a nurse, I was actually born there, so were my four other brothers and sisters. And it's so, it's a bit of a homecoming and a nice, unique challenge outside of the norm of what I've personally been working on for the past 10 years. Most of the stuff I've been doing is hardcore downtown, so this is a little bit removed, obviously has a few more challenges as it's buttressing two neighborhoods. But I genuinely think we can create one of the most dynamic places to live in the capital district, utilizing the park. We have an ungodly amount of parking spots that really give me nightmares. But we're going to work to add some green space in there and pretty it up. And genuinely, from the bottom of my heart, very excited to tackle this project. Love working in Schenectady over all other places, and we'll state it publicly. And yeah, happy for any and all support. My cell phone number is 518-944-8674. If any neighbors or elected officials ever want to chat, I'm readily available, and we'll meet on site to walk everybody through. Thanks.
Thank you. Tom Kennedy.
Good evening, my name is Tom Kennedy, I'm the Chair of the Republican Party of the city of Schenectady. I hear a lot of good things about this, this apartment complex that's going in. As far as the Republican Party, we have heard from the neighbors in that area, they're very much against it. We don't know what's going on. As far as we're concerned, it's like dropping a bomb in a neighborhood. So as far as we're concerned, we want to hear more about it. What we hear in the paper isn't enough. What we want is homeownership. Today, we just found out that there's only 27% of homeowners in the city of Schenectady. Twenty-seven. The state that we've been told is 55, 45, 55 owned, 45 rent is, is a healthy, is a healthy, is a healthy ratio for, for housing. What we're seeing here now is a possibility of further deterioration of the fabric of our neighborhoods. And when you dump 250 units in an area, again, the gentleman said buttressing two neighborhoods. You know, what's, that's going to increase traffic. Has anybody done any impact studies before this? Because I haven't seen any. I've asked for them. How are you going to do traffic with 240? So you're going to have 1,000-plus people in that area. Again, I don't know that if you guys have done anything in a city like this, I've heard not. I just think that it's a bad idea. We should, we'd knock that place down, open it up, and, and put homeownership in there. That's what we need in the city, not more apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacob Dobbs.
Members of the city council, Madam Chairman, generational wealth. That complex will deny young people the opportunity, young and old, the opportunity to purchase a home. My youngest daughter purchased a home 15 years ago at 20 years of age. And she's acquiring and amassing generational wealth. That apartment complex, it looks good, but it doesn't allow the people who live there to pass it down. So all I'm asking for is the opportunity to have individual homes built so that young people can purchase homes and pass on generational wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Ibrahim.
Good evening, everyone. When I moved from New York City to live here in Schenectady over 15 years ago, I came here because I was looking forward for quality of life. I liquidated three of my restaurants that I managed and owned in New Jersey and a beauty salon that I owned in Manhattan, New York. I moved here because house prices were cheap, and for me, they are still very cheap and affordable. There are still many people who would like to move here in the city of Schenectady. It's a great city, it's a historic city, it's spacious. I never had any problem for parking anywhere, the shopping is great. When I moved here, I also worked at St. Clair before it became Ellis Hospital, before we relocated on Knott Street. And I think it's a great area that's surrounded by many homeowners, one, two, and three family unit properties. It will be frightening for a lot of people yet who have not known that zoning applications are in process to consider this place to go up for a 240 to 250-unit building for rental purposes. I believe it will be used much better for affordable homes. Even I would be happy to buy another home there. And a lot of people, properties, I believe, with this, units that are going up there, home is going to depreciate in value because of tenancy, more people, traffic congestion. It would be a chaos over there. And it would try to, you know, stop people from thinking of moving up here. I moved here because I wanted to be a person to invest. And yes, I have invested quite a few properties over here. And here's where I thought I would build my wealth. And there are many people in New York City, especially in the Queens area, who would like to move over here to build their wealth because homes are quite affordable here. So I would really strongly be against this. And I would think that you all should consider, you know, at a larger scope about the zoning and to approve this because I think it's going to be hair-wire down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment closed. Ask the council for approval of the minutes from February 10th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Mancini. All in favor?
Aye.
If the clerk could please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for February 24th, 2025. Under general, there are none. Under official, none. And under petitions, none.
Thank you. Council members, any committee reports? This time we'll have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have no one signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment on the legislative agenda closed. Ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Mutiveren, second by Ms. Patrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
This time we'll have privilege of the floor related to the. This time we'll have privilege of the floor related to the general city business, and I have two people signed up to speak. First person is Chris Gibbs. You have three minutes.
Hey, what's going on, everybody? My name is Chris Gibbs, I'm community leader. First of all, I didn't even know about the project, Ellis Hospital, but I will say as somebody that was just looking for an apartment that is needed, I think that over the last like 10-plus years, there's been an influx of people that's been moving into the Schenectady area, and there's not enough, there's not enough apartments to accommodate. Like, I remember when I first came out here back in like 2007, 2008, I was able to find an apartment like this. And I was just a kid, I was a teenager. Now it's like, I'm an adult, like, I'm more established, I'm working, I'm like a figure in the community, and it's difficult, and it's other people that have trouble too. So I think that we do need to start paying attention to the amount of apartments, because it's an issue, like, when it comes to times of people to move. Now, the reason why I came, I have a couple topics to speak about. One of them is the snow and the ice. The other day I came out my house and I fell right on my back. You know what I mean? I wasn't trying to lay on the floor, or try to pretend, or, you know, Martin Hardy and Mazzati, I just got up and went about it, but I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people that go through this, and it's a serious issue. And I think that maybe the city should start to put an emphasis on ticketing homeowners that aren't shoveling their snow, because it's a trickle-down effect. If you don't shovel your snow, I'm a pedestrian, I can't walk on the sidewalk. So now, I'm in the street, I'm in the street walking. There's times when I'm walking, I see, I see women walking with strollers and children, and cars are going past, and cars are splashing these women, but it's even dangerous for the drivers, because now you have icy roads on top of the fact that you have pedestrians in the road. So I think that the city was to put an emphasis on ticketing homeowners, that'd be a way to, one, obviously make money, which we need, and number two, kind of like tighten up the city, you know, like, make people a little more responsible. And another thing I want to touch on, I do marketing for different organizations around the community, and one of those organizations being the Phoenix. And the other day, I went into SUNY SEC, and I was made aware that SEC doesn't have a basketball program. And I came out here to play ball, so that kind of like blew me away. And then, like, for me just talking, like, asking the community, because I'm very, like, I'm connected with, I'm with the community, I also found out that Schenectady High School doesn't have a varsity baseball team. And I look at it like, varsity baseball, that's like, and then it's like, you gotta, you gotta recognize what's happening early. Kids aren't playing sports. One of the guys there, like, Chadel Millerhouse, he's from this community. When I came out here, I watched him, you know? Now he's playing professional ball. That's my dream, I'm watching him live my dream, and it's amazing. He got that opportunity from sports, and we need the sports programs. So when I speak to the people, the community, they always mention that we need more things for the kids, so maybe we could put an emphasis on that as well, because we have some talented athletes. The pop on the football team wins everything. They never lose, they win everything, you know? And then we got the basketball programs, like, there's so many different AAU programs, and what makes it beautiful is that these are the adults from the community that were children that played basketball, now they're older, and they're coaching, and they're the mentors, and we want to keep things like that going. So I figured definitely like an emphasis on the sports programs and the children, you know, because the children are the future. You know what I mean? Without them, we have nothing. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Tom Kennedy?
Tom Kennedy, I'm the Chair of the Republican Party. You can hear me, I guess. I rise for concerns that were in the paper last week. There was issues that came to our attention that we reported on. The issue was the fact that one of your council members has been relieved from his That becomes an important thing for our community, because we have now have, the day doesn't go by without, we get 10, 15 calls about this issue. People are concerned, because now it's in the public square that Mr. Farley has been suspended because of sexual harassment. And if that, if that's not the case, he has every opportunity to dispel that. But last week, he had that opportunity, and what happened here during the executive session was that another city councilman left the meeting early to go and stage a getaway car to wait outside for Mr. Farley to come running out to talk to the media. Now, that was reported in a newspaper. So that's not the kind of councilman we want. We want a councilman who's going to be forthright, who's going to be honest with the people, the people who elected the city council. So we're here tonight to ask for not only his resignation, but yours, Porterfield, Madam Porterfield, and yours, Mr. Williams, because you can't be honest with the media. You have no business sitting in these chairs, because the media is what brings the information to the people that aren't here tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no one else signed up to speak, so declare the public comment of city business closed. Any miscellaneous business of the council? Mr. Williams?
So I'd first want to, to just highlight just my overexcitement for having this professional basketball team in the city of Schenectady. As I was reading the resolution, I was trying to keep my emotions at bay, but truly, I look at our city of Schenectady, and I am amazed every day by the people I meet, the residents who care so passionately to come up and share their views, and people just wanting to have a sense of collaboration, working in unison. One of the tenants that I've always recognized, being a member of this community, is people usually don't want handouts, they're just looking for opportunities. And I see this housing complex as another opportunity. I know we've heard comments about its impact on the economic conditions from investors, however, it is a fact that rents in this city are skyrocketing, and the only way to combat that is to offer more housing. And I can say myself, having been blessed with an opportunity to serve our country for 13 years, I had the VA Home Program to rely on. I can tell you, a lot of my peers do not have that same opportunity, and the cost of homeownership is rising. So I think as this next generation evaluates whether homeownership is in their, their mindset or, or long-term plans, I think, again, it is our responsibility to be responsive and offer more alternative means for people to find a safe and reasonably priced housing. With regards to the situation that we heard about, Mr. Farley, I believe this country was formed on the ideals of you are innocent until proven guilty, and I have the utmost faith that if anything was imperative for us, that the council would be aware of, that it is not only Mr. Farley's responsibility, but it's something that he would willingly share. However, I'd like to point out two things that happened this evening, one of which identifying my collaboration with him. I was already planning on leaving before, however, as you can tell, when accusations are being shouted at you without even having an opportunity to have a conversation, that may sometimes be wrong or an inaccurate reflection of what the actual events were. And secondly, I'd like to point out that Mr. Kennedy pointed at Mr. Farley when he was speaking to me, Mr. Williams. So I think that just outlines some of the undertones that are present in these comments as they continue to be swirled at Mr. Farley. And I think at this point, it is responsible for me, myself, to call it out, and call out these shenanigans, and if we are truly looking forward to impacting the lives of people in our city, let's talk about some real issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mutiveren?
Thank you. I just have a reminder to our seniors, the star exemption is due no later than March 1st, so I would like to remind all the seniors, if you are 65 and over, and you live and own a property in the city of Schenectady, please make sure that you file for the basic exemption, and also the senior low income exemption, so that that will help you with your tax bill. Again, please, if you have questions regarding this exemption, please reach out to our assessment office. The staff are very helpful there, and they are 382-5075. Again, 382-5075. It is important that you, as senior, to get this exemption, and it goes a long way. So if you have questions, please also reach out to your city council member, reach out to the assessment office, and make sure if you, if you receive this letter, submit it. If you need help, reach out. And if you didn't receive the letter, please reach out to the assessment office downstairs and get the form and complete it and submit it before March 1st of this year, so that you're qualified for the exemption going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you. Just a few items I want to, Mr. Gibbs, I think, has left, but I did want to also reiterate about cleaning up the sidewalks, which we've talked about here before. We really need our residents to make sure that they're shoveling in front of their, in front of their residences, and trying to make those sidewalks safe for our residents. I also wanted to talk about the fact that we have, our Parks Director is really working hard to establish a very strong recreational program in our parks this summer for our youth. So there will be a really robust program of recreational activities, arts activities, other types of things for our youth in the parks. So again, looking forward to seeing how that comes to be, and, and looking forward to having lots of kids in our, in our parks this summer. I also wanted to remind folks that as of March 1st, the speed limit is being reduced to 25 miles per hour within the city of Schenectady, except on, I think it's three streets, parts of State Street, Erie Boulevard, and Maxon Road Extension. We've passed that reduction in our speed limit to try to enhance the safety of our streets for both our pedestrians, our cyclists, and our drivers. So I hope that folks will, you know, I've already started practicing going 25 mile per hour, I don't know if my colleagues have, but it is challenging, I will say, to stay at 25 miles per hour, so please pay attention to that. I'd like to thank, again, AAA Northway, who's partnering with us on a reduced price in taking the defensive driving class. I've done that myself a couple of times, and I really encourage people, as of March 1st, to take advantage of that, because it really does help. You think about your driving behaviors, and think about the ways that you can, you know, stay safe as, as drivers in the city of Schenectady. Thanks.
Thank you. So the mayor has left. So thank you, council members. I do want to speak to something that was said at the, at the rail, and I just want to be clear that the, what Mr. Kennedy, the allegation that he said about sexual harassment, I did not read anyplace. I personally received no indication that that had happened. So sir, unless it's been said publicly, I would be careful about making allegations, unless you have that in writing someplace, because that's a very serious thing to say about anyone. Haven't seen it publicly, haven't been told that publicly by anyone, received no correspondence, not even from you. So I just wanted to say that, because that's really very something serious to say about anyone, if you have no proof of it. And if you have proof of it, then that's a different conversation. And you can send it. I'd like to also, and, and also, you know, we talk about leadership, and you named what party you're from, and then we could also look at the leadership of your party, sir, in terms of criminal accusations.
Who is my party?
We can talk outside.
No, you made, you made the allegation, who is our party?
It's not an allegation. So--
Who is our party? You, you just said that, I didn't say, who is our party? It's kind of, you were talking about saying something that ends in a broken--
Fall order.
Who is our party?
You're out of order, and I will ask you to leave if you continue. You made your comments, I'm making mine. And if you would like to talk to me outside the room, I am more than happy to have a discussion with you. You never call, you only come and make these allegations. If we're going to be adults about this, let's have a conversation. We're all in this together, once we get to this place. I'd like to just announce that Schenectady Recharge is having the meetings to, to, to update our comprehensive plan, and the next meeting is tomorrow, Tuesday, the 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, at the Mount Pleasant Library on Crane Street. And the next meeting is the Sycamore Collaborative on Albany Street on March 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. With that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Mr. Mutiveren, second by Ms. Patrick. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick.
Thank you.
Josh? You guys have a blessed weekend.
Thank you.
All right, you too, thank you.
Have a good night.
Get your necks in, feel better. If you're coming down with something.